Okay. We'll do that. So with that, we will call our meeting to order. So good evening and welcome to the September 8th, 2020 Vista Consolidated Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N-2920. In the event the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage that is not corrected within 10 minutes, the meeting will automatically be adjourned, like hopefully no rolling blackouts, huh? Any items noticed as public hearings at that point would be continued to the next regularly scheduled evening meeting of the City Council. Any other items on the agenda that Council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. And with that, we will do a roll call by our Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman.
Thank you. When you hear your name, please state you're present. Mayor Ritter.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Present.
Councilmember Franklin.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Present.
All members are present.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, may raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak by clicking the Raise Hand feature on your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the Agenda hover sheet. Staff will be lowering everyone's hand now to start the meeting. We will announce when to raise your hand to indicate you would like to make a comment on the specific item being discussed. You may only speak on an item once in public time within three minutes. So with that, we will have the approval of the agenda with our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening to the agenda.
Okay, with that, we have one presentation this evening, and our City Manager, Patrick Johnson, is going to provide a COVID-19 update.
So good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So today, I thought I'd give you an overview on what's taken place in the last couple of weeks since you last met. I think, as most of you know, about a week and a half ago, on August 28th, the Governor announced a blueprint for a safer economy, and the blueprint replaces the metrics that the county was using for when businesses can open and when they are not allowed to be open. And so there was going to be a slide that was going to be placed up, but I'm not sure if Ally's got the capability to do that or not. But I think all of you were emailed that slide. There it is. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. But you can see from the slide that you may have in front of you that the new framework lists four tiers or four categories, and all counties will abide by the same rules, and they'll fall into these tiers. So that is not the screen. Hold on a second. Sorry about that. So there you go. You have it in front of you. So as you can see, there's two categories there: case rate and test positivity rates. Those are the two categories that the state has chosen that'll determine the metrics on whether businesses or uses can operate. And you can see there that the categories are labeled. The purple category is the widespread category. The substantial category is red. Moderate is the orange, and minimal is yellow. And so counties are placed within those. And so widespread, what this means, as you can see on the chart, is that a county that has more than seven cases daily on average per 100,000 population and a test positivity rate of over 8% would fall into this category. And I will say the widespread category, out of all the counties in California, 38 counties are in this category. So by far, the large majority of the counties are in the widespread. And under the widespread, as you might remember, that not a lot of businesses are able to open indoors for any type of use. The next category there is the red, which is the substantial, and this means that a county has four to seven new cases per 100,000 population and a positivity rate of between 5 and 8%. And this is the category that the County of San Diego is currently in. And within this category, as of yesterday, there were nine counties that fell into the red category or the substantial category. The next one is the moderate. This is, means a county has between 1 and 3.9 cases per 100,000 and a positivity rate of 2 to 4.9%. And there's only eight counties in this category. And then the last one is minimal. This is the yellow, and it means that a county has less than one case per 100,000 and a positivity rate of 2%. And there are only three counties in the entire state that fall into this category. And so every week, on Tuesdays, there'll be weekly assessments to allow the counties to better understand what tier they fall into. And counties must stay in a tier for 21 days before becoming eligible to go to another tier. And after 21 days, if they've met those metrics for at least two straight weeks, they can move or change tiers. Now, you can also, you can move up, so you can go from the widespread category to the substantial, or you can go from the substantial category and move back to widespread. So you can go back. So the factors are the same. If you have two consecutive weekly periods where you don't meet the metrics in your category, you can move up or down. If a county does move down, meaning you went from substantial to widespread, that would mean that the county has three days to implement the changes. So as an example, in San Diego County, we have businesses that are open to a variety of degrees. If we went from substantial to widespread, the county would have three days to revert to not allowing businesses to open indoors. As I mentioned, you know, we are currently in the substantial category, which is the red category. As of Sunday, which was September 6th, the county had a adjusted case rate of 5.8, and we had a positivity rate of 4.2. So we fell right in that category. With the way the testing has gone, currently, I think the county, while they haven't publicized it on their website yet, I think if you're doing the numbers, the adjusted case rate is going to be significantly higher than 5.8, and the positive test case rate is probably somewhere around 4.2, 4.3%. But under this category that we're currently in, different uses can operate. So restaurants are able to allow for dine-in, which has been very well received, and they can do 25% capacity or 100 persons, whichever is fewer. And one of the questions that we received over the weekend was, do restaurants still have to close at 10:00 PM, or can they be open later? And the answer is yes, they still have to close at 10:00 PM. Places of worship can now operate indoors, same criteria, 25% or 100 people, whichever is lower. Movie theaters, they can operate as well at 25% or 100 people, whichever is lower. And then you get into some of the other categories: gym and fitness centers, dance studios, yoga studios. They can all operate at 10% capacity. And then hair salons, barber shops, nail salons, tattoo parlors, and skincare, they can all open with modifications. So the good news is that we're in the substantial category, which allows some businesses to reopen to a degree indoors. I think the bad news is that we're teetering between substantial and widespread, and so the outcome for businesses could change in the coming weeks. So that's an update on where we stand. That completes my update to you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Do you see any questions? Nobody is waving at me. So with that, we will move on to our consent calendar. Joe, it's hard to see you, so you have to make big waves, okay? In your little, over there. Yes, okay, got it. Okay, so the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by using the Raise Hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar, and we have eight consent items this evening. So do any of our council members want to remove an item? John Franklin, are you, Councilmember Franklin?
I'd offer a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I just don't see a second. Joe, you, you were, okay.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion and a second, so please cast your votes, or we're gonna do...
Mayor, if I could just point out, no member of the public has requested to remove an item from the consent calendar either.
Got you, yes, yeah, sorry. Okay. So with that, we're gonna cast our votes, being nobody has anything to pull. So... We'll need a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is me again. I do not have, I do not have a script, so we'll just go as is. When you hear your name, please state your vote. Mayor Ritter?
Um, yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. So that motion passes unanimously, and the next thing we have is, we have one discussion item this evening: fiscal years 2019 and '20 and 2020 to '21, operating budget mid-cycle update. And our senior management analyst, Sarah Taylor, will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the Raise Hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to our analyst, Sarah Taylor.
Hi, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. The purpose of this discussion item is to provide a mid-cycle update for the operating budget and recommend revised appropriations for fiscal year 2020-21. On Slide 1, the next slide, on June 25th of 2019, the City Council adopted the fiscal year 2019-20 and 2020-21 operating budget, transitioning from a single-year budget to a two-year budget. Under the two-year budget, the city continues to operate on a July 1st through June 30th annual fiscal year, retaining the fiscal control provided by annual budget. As part of the fiscal control, staff has completed a mid-cycle review and is presenting a revised estimate of revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2020-21 to the City Council for approval. For fiscal year 2019-20, which ended on June 30th, revenues continue to be received and expenditures continue to be processed into the first couple months of the current fiscal year. As such, staff is still evaluating the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and stay-at-home order on the city's fiscal year 1920 finances, and will present the full effects later this year as part of the fourth quarter financial report to the City Council. On Slide 2 and the rest of the report, it focuses on year two of the two-year budget. The total proposed amended 2020-21 operating budget for all funds is $149.3 million. It's a decrease of $951,000 from the original adopted budget. Slide 2 shows the breakdown by expense category and by funding type, with the general fund shown in the green and the non-general fund shown in blue. As illustrated on this slide, the general fund, or unrestricted monies, fund the bulk of the city's expenses, including general government and all of public safety. Slide 3 outlines the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city's revenues. It has drastically impacted sales tax, transient occupancy tax, or also known as hotel tax, charges for services, and the Recreation and Community Services Department, and gas tax revenues. The city has proactively worked to build reserves to better prepare the city to handle economic downturns. The city's emergency reserve is at 31% of the general fund operating budget, with an additional structural deficit reserve of $9.3 million. In April, the City Council approved the use of the structural deficit reserve to support the city's operating budget for 2019-20 and for 2020-21, to mitigate significant reductions of staff and core services due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Based on revised general fund revenues and appropriation reductions, use of the structural deficit reserve for fiscal year 2020-21 is estimated at $3.5 million. Staff is committed to the quarterly budget process to effectively and proactively manage the city's finances as the results of the pandemic continue to unfold. Slide 4 summarizes the revised general fund revenue estimates for fiscal year 2020-21. The general fund is the primary funding source for essential services for the daily operations of the city. Until the COVID-19 pandemic, the general fund revenues were continuing to increase. However, the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic have drastically impacted general fund revenues, and they are projected to decrease by approximately $5.5 million for the fiscal year from the original adopted budget. Over 80% of the general fund revenues are derived from three sources: property taxes, sales taxes, and charges for services. Property tax remains relatively stable and is estimated at $24.8 million for 2020-21, an estimated 3% growth over fiscal year 1920 actuals. Sales tax revenue, however, is highly dependent on continued employment and consumer confidence, and has been heavily impacted. The estimated decrease in sales and use tax is $1.8 million from the original adopted budget, and an additional $684,000 decrease from sales tax from Proposition L. Revenue from charges for services is projected to decrease by $2.3 million. $1.7 million is directly related to the drastic decrease in our ability to provide programming related to the Recreation and Community Services Department. As a result of the stay-at-home order, the Moonlight Summer season was canceled. The Senior Center and Recreation Division have had to cancel the majority of their programs, and the Wave Water Park, which is part of the department but not in the general fund, has also canceled virtually all programming. Other significant changes from the original budget include projected decreases of $1 to the hotel tax, and $500,000 in business licenses and permits, as well as a projected increase of $1.7 million in medical cannabis taxes. On Slide 5, the summary of the expenditure changes for the general fund by category. The total proposed amended fiscal year 2021 operating budget for the general fund is $83.6 million, a decrease of $1.9 million from the original adopted budget. The largest appropriation decreed for the general fund is for the Recreation Community Services Department, which includes recreation, the Adobe Senior Services, and cultural arts. The stay-at-home order has halted or drastically reduced the programming in this department. On Slide 6, there are several program areas that require general fund subsidies to continue normal operation. Declines in fuel consumption and vehicle sales have reduced gas tax revenues, resulting in a budgetary subsidy for the gas tax repair and maintenance fund. Another significant change is an increase in the subsidy to cultural arts. This is due to the loss of revenues from the cancellation of the Moonlight Summer 2020 season. On Slide 7, the summary of the total operating budget by fund type. The total revised operating budget for expenditures for fiscal year 2020-21 for all funds is $149.3 million, a decrease of $951,000 from the original budget. Exhibit 5, included in the agenda report, provides revised revenue estimates and appropriation detail by fund and budget unit. This concludes the mid-cycle update for the operating budget. I am available if there are any questions.
Okay, do I have any questions? Should I, should I go through everybody, or do you want to wave at me? I can just, I guess, Deputy Mayor, do you have any questions? I'll kind of go through the list here. No? How about, Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, I just want to offer a word of appreciation for all of our staff, including all those who are in the budget planning and management. I'm proud of where we're at as a city. Also, you know, my praise to my colleagues. We are in a really good place as a city financially because of some big decisions that we made years ago, coming out of the recession. We have planned for a small recession. Our City Management Council have wisely put back funds. In addition to our larger emergency reserve, we've put back funds for short-term deficit, and so we're in a good place. We've also made some tough decisions, and we've had to reduce some programming, and we're all looking forward to that programming, coming back online, the moonlight, the wave, getting back to normal safely. But we've, we're really in a good place, and we're, we're really, as a city, to be commended for the place that we're in. We, you know, we, we haven't, we haven't suffered any terrible effects of this, of the pandemic yet, and I think we're gonna come through this in a really good position. So I'm really pleased to receive this report, and even though it's, it's red ink in the short term, because of our sound long-term planning, we're gonna be okay. We're gonna get through this.
Councilmember Green, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff again for a fantastic update, and also, it looks like it's a little bit better than what we expected. Only having to use $3.5 million of the structural deficit, I think is about half of what initially we thought we were gonna have to use, you know, initially when this was all sprung upon us. So, you know, hopefully, businesses will get back, will be rebounding, and be putting more money back in those reserves pretty soon. So thank you so much for your report, and thank you, colleagues, for the decisions that you made to make sure that we had the money to get through this pandemic. Great job.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah, I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues, you know, very appreciative of where we're at in the city financially, which allows us to continue to plan long-term and have those community goals, and continue to work towards them. So I know it's difficult, but, you know, we're, the ship is going in the right direction. And also, I just want to say that our businesses, I want to thank all our businesses for just staying strong through this. You know, I overheard one of our local business owners talking about the Vista is open and how great it was that they came and did a promotional video, and you know. So people are utilizing the programs that we put forward, and I just want to thank my colleagues and all my coworkers on staff for the incredible job that we've done to really help as best as we can in this situation. So just hoping for the best. And I, I did try, you know, dining in, and it went really well. So, you know, maybe I'll, I'll spot one of y'all on one of my outings pretty soon, and until then, let's just keep working together and making sure that, you know, we're putting our community in the horizon and working towards those goals.
City Clerk, Belle Des, do we have any members of the public that want to speak on this?
No, we do not. So we'll go ahead and close the opportunity for public comment on this item.
I think the Deputy Mayor may have wanted to make a remark.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just see that we need to make a motion. So I was going to move that we approve a staff's recommendation in both Item 1 and 2 on this item.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. So that, please conduct your oral call vote.
Thank you. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Okay, the next thing that brings us to our oral communications. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda. If any members of the public wish to address the City Council, they may indicate so by using the Raise the Hand feature or pressing star nine now. Do we have any public speakers? City Clerk?
Nope. We don't have any speakers. So we'll close the opportunity for oral communication.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Well, one person just raised their hand. So we have Chad speaking, so we're tag teaming it here, so Chris is gonna put Chad in, and we'll give him three minutes to speak. Okay, Chad, go ahead.
All right, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so this is oral communication for public comment?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. First off, thank you all for your hard work and dedication to do all of these meetings. I really appreciate having this online. This is really nice. But I wanted to touch on a subject. I reside at 243 North Citrus Avenue, and on Thursday, September 3rd, I was, I was, I received a violation from municipal code 1852-060, exceeding the allowable four-square-foot limit for residential signage, punishable by a fine of up to $1,000, including possible sign removal and my expense. And reading through the code, it's clear the intent is to regulate signage and the public right away with a fair, safe, and uniformed code that maintains a level of control. However, using one's home as a medium to engage in political discussion is a unique and personal choice that should not be infringed. And according to the '94 Supreme Court ruling of Galio versus the city of LeDoux, set the precedents to time, place, and manner restrictions, or content-based sign restrictions, were both shown to be unsatisfactory. They ruled that displaying a sign from one zone residence carries a message quite distinct from placing the same sign in someplace else, or provides information about the speaker's identity, which is an important component of many attempts to persuade. So in the spirit of Constitution Week, I urge the council to take action and establish a moratorium on enforcing this unconstitutional code that permits anyone with a phone to weaponize city staff against a citizen's right to free speech, especially during these trying times when traditional methods of campaigning are off the table for certain people who happen to be immunocompromised or have any other health issues. So with that, I would give my time, and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. And that will close the oral communications. We have no other speakers.
Okay, with that, then we will go to, I will do, I think I'll do my mayor's comments, and then I'll go to each of you for your comments. So I have here, low-income Vista seniors and persons with disabilities may be eligible to receive a free electric fan. The County of San Diego is providing fans to those who are living on limited incomes. To be eligible, a resident must not have access to an air-conditioned space at their home or apartment building. To learn more, call the county's Aging and Independent Services at 1-800-339-4661. So it's 800-339-4661. Join the city of Vista remotely at this year's annual Coastal Cleanup Day on Saturday, September 26th. This year, volunteers will clean up their neighborhoods in order to stay safe, and we appreciate all of our cleanup volunteers, and we know that they make a positive impact on our community. Information is online at cleanupday.org. And the last thing the San Diego County Register of Voters is preparing election ballots for mailing, and is encouraging active registered voters to check their voter registration now to get a mail ballot at their address later. To learn more, at sdvote.com. And that's most of my comments, and so I will go to Deputy Mayor first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say a couple of thank yous. First off, I want to say thank you to Matt and everybody over at the Boys and Girls Club today for inviting us. Two of my councilmembers joined me, Councilmember Contreras and Councilman Green, to welcome back the students to school. So we got to cheer them on as they went down the archway and got to have their pictures taken. So thank you for including us in that. That was a lot of fun. And I also wanted to say thank you to our Vista Fire Department for all that they've been doing for support in the fires up north, as well as the newest fire that we have over this weekend over in the Valley Fire. I know that we have, one of our teams is back from up north. I'm not sure if the second one is back yet or not, but I wanted to just say thank you to them for all that they're doing, not just here in Vista, but throughout the state. And also to say thank you to our staff for the work that you do all the time for us, and especially in this time. It's not easy for anybody here at the city, city staff, or even our residents out in the city, who also I want to give a big shout out to, for all of the accommodations that we all are making, for making our way through this whole event, and the changing rules, and the things that we're having to deal with on a daily basis or a weekly basis. And I just want to say thank you to our community for the grace and for the understanding and for the support that we show each other. That's very, very important, and it just shows who we are as Pistons, and I'm very proud of our city, our residents, and our city staff. And I just want to say thank you to everybody. So with that, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Franklin?
I would just echo all the Deputy Mayor's remarks. I'm in full agreement. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Councilmember Green?
All right. I also want to thank Matt Kumares and the Boys and Girls Club team. It was super awesome, not only cheering for the students, but also cheering for the parents who get their kids to go into a classroom, which was pretty awesome. With that, I do want to wish all of the parents out there and all the kids in Vista Unified School District a happy first day of school. It was the first day of school at my house, and my son Joey, who is an eighth grader, it's his first day of eighth grade. School was a little different today. He said that initially, his first class was a little long, but by the end of the day, it kept getting better. So, you know, we are all in this together. It's not what we'd all seen it look like. I'm sure you guys have seen the first day of school pictures with the masks and everything going across social media. But the truth is, we're all working together to make a difference, to get back to normal. And I just want to make sure that all the parents and all the students out there know that as a city, as a staff, and as a council, we're all here with you, man. We're here supporting you. Keep your sanity, smile lots. Remember to see the positive in every situation, because there is positive out there. We're all loved. So have a great day. Thank you, council. Thank you, city staff, for all that you do. Great meeting tonight. It's Taco Tuesday. Woo!
Councilmember Contreras?
Well, my colleagues pretty much have said it all. So I want to echo everything that has been said before me. Big shout out to our firefighters, not just here in Vista, but, you know, throughout California. It's every, every fire season, it just gets worse. So, you know, just praying that we make it through without any incidents here. I want to say that I have been snorkeling in La Jolla, and I'm noticing right now, looking at my face. But I brought that up because I'm trash as I'm snorkeling. And, you know, I know we've talked about trash a lot. Please, 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 Vista, dispose of your trash properly. All of that flows out into the ocean. And if you want to be a little bit proactive, you know, come join us on Wednesday at Luzduran Park at 9:00 AM. I do a trash pickup every single Wednesday, and we can, you know, stop some of this from flowing out to the ocean. So with that, thank you, everybody. Great discussions, not very long ones today. Have a rest, a fantastic rest of your day. The sun is still out, so.
City Manager Patrick Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. As was mentioned, the fires that are occurring all over the state, and specifically the Valley Fire in San Diego, I thought I'd give you an update on where our fire crews are and how we're preparing. As you know, the Valley Fire started on Saturday. It's burned over 17,000 acres. It is at 3% containment. And the big concern is the Santa Ana winds that are due not only today, but through tomorrow. And the National Weather Service has predicted that these winds will be very strong in the East County, probably not so much at the magnitude where we're at, but significant winds on the East County. And that is going to play a part with not only the Valley Fire, but any other fires that may erupt during that timeframe. We're very conscientious about that. There is a red flag warning through tomorrow at 8:00. Currently, Vista has two crews at the Valley Fire. We had one crew that was assigned from the get-go of the fire, and then we had another crew that was at the Sheep Fire in Northern California that was coming down today. And as they came down today, they got deployed directly to the Valley Fire. So we have two crews that are currently working the Valley Fire. We also have a pre-positioned North County Strike Team that has been staffed up in case there is anything that breaks out for us in the county, or specifically the North County. And we have an engine that's assigned to that, as well as two chiefs. And then we also have a firefighter paramedic that is working as a fire line medic at one of the fires as well. So that's in place. We have up-staffed the department specifically through tomorrow to make sure that if there is a wind event, that we're prepared for it. And so we're hoping that, fingers crossed, that all goes well, specifically over the next couple of days and this fire season. But did want to let everybody know that if you need more information on wildfire preparedness or tips, you can go to our website, which is cityofvista.com, and you can go to backslash emergency prep and receive all of that. So that is it. Thank you.
Okay, City Attorney, do you have anything today?
No, I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, how about a City Clerk, Kathy Valdez? Do you have anything else today?
No, I just want to apologize for the difficulties earlier. I appreciate everybody's patience. Have a great night.
Okay, before we go, I have, actually, I have my grandson as a fire medic up north in Big Sur and up in that area. He's been up there for like over two weeks now, going on three weeks, so is a fire line medic, so. And I got my other little grandkids back in school that live with me, which is so exciting to have them gone during the day, so I'm very excited about that. But with that, I want to end with this, that this Friday is Patriots' Day. Nineteen years ago, on September 11th, our lives were changed forever as a result of the terrorist attacks, attacks against the United States. Patriots' Day is a time to pause, to honor the memories of those who lost their lives and the men and women who responded to the call of duty to protect our way of life. So on Friday, let's pause and pay tribute to them. We also acknowledge the living who serve our country. We thank them for the great sacrifices that they make for all of us each day. So just on Friday, take a few minutes to remember those and to remember Patriots' Day. So with that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thanks, everybody.